...thirteenth, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Madam President, there is an addendum to the personnel report, and that is at your place.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Ms. Doherty, second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. Recognitions and presentations, this is a favorite part of ours, and looks like we have a lot this evening, so it's absolutely wonderful to see all of you here. And we will have that with Jennifer Bradford Vernon and First Superintendent's Excellence Awards.
Good evening. Our first group of awards goes to forensic students at Central High School who qualified for state. Jubilee Kenny is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the forensic students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Parents, if you'd like to take a photo, just stand for that, and we'll be glad to pause. And this is for the Central High School forensic students. As I call your name, please step toward Dr. Hardy so you can receive your award, and then please walk to the end of the line and remain standing until everyone's received their award. Qualifying and competing were Jeb Allen, Sr., Alexia Berry, freshman. Alexia was a double state semifinalist in pros and duo interpretation. Lily Myers, freshman. And Kim Lee, Jr., dramatic interpretation. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you. Our next group of awards goes to forensic students at South High School who qualified for state. Kristen Haggen is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the forensic students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? So I'll read the names, and Dr. Hardy will present the certificates, and then we'll clap for all the students at the end of the presentations. South High took third as a team with 21 students participating. They were Tiana Marion, sophomore; fifth place in impromptu speaking and 11th in foreign extemporaneous; Santiago Vasquez, Jr.; state runner-up in foreign extemporaneous; Gavin Jones, Jr.; placed third in domestic extemporaneous; Maya Daly, sophomore; placed fifth in domestic extemporaneous; Brandon Stewart, Jr.; state champion in program oral interpretation; Savannah Bonilla, Jr., state qualifier; Maddie Turner, sophomore; placed fourth in program oral interpretation and eighth in dramatic interpretation; Emma Smith, sophomore, state qualifier; Jacob Sweet, Jr.; placed fourth in informative speaking and eighth in humorous interpretation; Tristan Kendronet, Jr.; state runner-up in oration; Emma Shulda, freshman; two excellent rating in poetry and dramatic interpretation at state festival; Leleana Masayuni, freshman; one superior rating in dramatic interpretation at state festival; Seth Carter, freshman; one superior rating in foreign extemporaneous and humorous interpretation at state festival; Eileen Escobedo, sophomore; one superior rating in informative and two excellent rating in extemporaneous at state festival; Ariana Nunez, freshman; Madison Wilson Snook, freshman; one superior rating in duo interpretation and impromptu at state festival; Andrew Lagerman, sophomore; Ashley Caraway, sophomore; one superior rating in humorous interpretation and two excellent rating in duet acting at state festival; Maya Dennett, freshman; Katerina Sivertalova, Jr.; one superior rating in dramatic interpretation at state festival; Miriam Benavides, sophomore, state qualifier. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? at the Regional Kansas Scholastic Press Association's Journalism Contest and qualified for state competition at KU earlier this month. Kim Warren is their advisor. Please join Dr. Hardy in the front. And will all the journalism students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their advisor? Kiara Alvarez, Sr. Lizzie Franco, sophomore. Lizzie achieved third place yearbook theme and graphics, honorable mentions, sports writing and yearbook sports writing. Grace Hoag, Sr. Adrielle Ordanas, Sr. Lauren Rubenstein, Jr. Katie Rivera, Jr. Marissa Ross, Sr. Olivia Hurd, Jr. Honorable mention, news page design. Kaylee Warren, Sr. Third place advertising and honorable mention headline writing and design. Daniela Garcia, Sr. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to journalism students at Central High School who qualified for state. J.D. Garber and Shelby Dinkle are their advisors, and J.D. is at a track event this evening. The staff of the pylons line of Central High School student publication won the Pacemaker Award. Along with the publications award, these students earned national awards in Chicago. Will all those journalism students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and Shelby Dinkle? Qualifying and competing were Molly Michaelis, Jr.; Cameron Arnold, Sr.; Miles Denning, Jr. Miles received a third place editorial writing and honorable mention yearbook copy. Annie Taggart, Sr., honorable mention, copy editing. Jersey Mullins, Jr.; Caden Cobb, Jr.; Concha Campa, Jr.; Marley Coleman, Jr.; honorable mention, news writing. Maria Gutierrez, Sr. Malcolm Berkeley, Jr.; Madeline Parity, Jr. First place headline writing; second place infographics, honorable mention, news page design. Isabella Robino, sophomore; first place news page design; second place headline writing. Gavin Sutton, Sr. First place academics photo, honorable mention, photo illustration. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to FFA students at Central and South High Schools who qualified for state. Brooke Petty is their coach. Will all the FFA students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their coach? Qualifying and competing from Central were Coy Rickley, Sr.; Madelyn Smith, Jr.; Kendra Skates, Jr.; Ashley Abbott, Jr.; Madison Crowder, Sr. Veterinary science and livestock judging. Towless Price, Jr., livestock judging. Taswell Yates, Jr., livestock judging. Qualifying and competing from South were Bailey Berry, Sr.; Caitlin Elder, Sr. Veterinary science and livestock judging. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now. Our next award goes to one student who has been named a 2019 Kansas Career and Technical Education, CTE, Scholar for the State of Kansas. Will Cindy Rhodes, Central High sponsor, and T. Wen, please join Dr. Hardy? The Kansas CTE Scholar Program is an opportunity to recognize well-rounded, outstanding CTE students who are finishing their senior year of high school, have earned or presently enrolled in 3.0 or more CTE credits, provide documentation of technical skill attainment, have a CTE grade point average of 3.5 or better in CTE coursework, demonstrated leadership and community engagement, have professional learning experiences, and provide a career vision summary statement. Congratulations to T. Wen, Senior CTE Scholar at Central High School. Next, we recognize high school seniors who have been named Kansas Gold Seal of Bilitracy winners. Jan Denning is the Central Building Coordinator, and Deb Cohen is the South Building Coordinator. Please join Dr. Hardy in the front. The Kansas Seal of Bilitracy students possess the ability to not only speak but also read and write grammatically correct words and sentences in at least two languages. We invite all of the Gold Seal of Bilitracy winners to the front. Students from Central, Ashley Eck, Sr. Carlos Jaramillo, Sr. Lauren Tubal, Sr. Students from South were Cristobal Dominguez, Sr. Araceli Nieto, Sr. Daniela Rivera, Sr. Ivan Vilo Castanada, Sr. Reina Martinez, Sr. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now. at Central High School who qualified for the state contest. Kelly Jones is their sponsor. Please join Dr. Hardy. The YEC program has a local fall and spring event. If the students qualify, they compete at the state YEC event. Will all this year's YEC students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? The young entrepreneurs from Central were Logan Losi, freshman. Kaylee Jones, Jr., took first place at the local spring YEC competition. Luke Stanford, Jr., selected as a wild card recipient to compete at the state event. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our last awards go to the following students who passed the National Health Science Assessment Exam and earned a certificate of proficiency. Peggy Kleiber is the Central High sponsor. Please line up next to Dr. Hardy. Will all this year's students please line up as well? The following students received a certificate of proficiency. Madison Crowder, Sr. T. Wen, Sr. Madison Stack, Sr. The following seniors were unable to be here this evening. Ashley Eck, Georgian Enz; Morgan Queen, Jesslyn Stewart; Gavin Wolfmule, and Phoebe Hilton. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? 2019. Will they please join Dr. Hardy in the front of the room? Renaissance teachers are recognized through radio announcements and on the Citywide Self-Storage Electronic Sign. They receive a prize package supported by Y93.7, KSAL, 24/7 Travel Stores, and Citywide Self-Storage. January through May, Renaissance Teachers of the Month were: At Central High School, January, Jennifer Hedberg, Family and Consumer Sciences teacher; February, Karen Abker, English teacher; April, Ben Rohr, band teacher; Lakewood Middle School, January, Rachel Wendt, 7th and 8th grade, science teacher; February, Angela Reese, 6th and 7th grade, reading teacher; March, Jason Emig, history teacher; South High School, January, Dan Cerny, Algebra II, trig, and precalculus teacher; March, Kylie Meyer, family and consumer teacher; April, Kristen Hanks, Algebra I teacher; May, Brenda Geis, math teacher; South Middle School, March, Bevan Welch, fax teacher; and due to prior commitments, the following were unable to join us today: Megan Alley, Megan Palmer, Amy Deal, and Rose Whitman at South Middle; Solomon Rose and Michael Hall, Central High; Amanda Francisco and Alyssa Waldron, Lakewood Middle; Erica Kane at South High. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. 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 We can sit down and hide behind the screen.
the April 23rd, 2019 regular meeting; minutes of the April 26th, 2019 special meeting; personnel reports; financial reports, which include April bills list, April bond bills list; bond budget summary, approved encumbrance listings, which include to Skyward for the annual renewal in the amount of $63,230.50 to Paul's Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of $50,000 for projected expense for food service, equipment, repairs, and maintenance for the 2019-2020 school year; to Whedon Hammer for the annual maintenance agreement; renewal for Alio Financial Software System in the amount of $34,873.50; approved custodial supplies and service bids to Forestate Maintenance and Supply in the estimated annual amount of $140,000; approved Coronado HVAC replacement bid to Calabrese Heating and Cooling Incorporated in the amount of $294,593; approval of 2019-2020 food program prices for an increase of 10 cents in both student meal prices and adult meal prices for the 2019-2020 school year; approved Salina Adult Basic Education Physical Year 20 funding amounts for the total of $161,428; approved Salina Regional Health Center grant request to apply for $15,150 to the Salina Regional Health Foundation CHIP grant program for the purchase of bleeding control stations at all buildings; approved Meadowlark PTO gift acceptance for walking trail in the amount of $15,000; and approved Central High Robotics gift acceptance from Gustaf and Hannah Applequist Pass Through Fund for the Greater Salina Community Foundation in the amount of $20,000. Is there any discussion?
Madam President, I'm going to excuse myself for the potential conflicts of interest.
Is there any discussion?
No, I would make a motion.
Okay.
I move we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or comments at all? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, six zero. Are there, is there anyone out there to represent adult education for what they received? Is there anyone there to come forward and share about the walking trail at Meadowlark?
First, I would like to thank you for approving the gift because it is a very generous one and one that's going to go a long way in getting us started. The Parent Teacher Organization, along with the students and staff at Meadowlark Ridge, proposed a walking trail to be installed within our playground area so that students, kindergarten, first, and second grade could enjoy walking the marathon in the fall in somewhat more enclosed path. It will alleviate a lot of safety concerns that we've had because this year we had almost 452 students participating. We had a 96% participation rate, so many, many students. And so when we can separate the students and have some of our little ones in a more enclosed area, it will certainly allow our other students who are faster and like to move around a little bit quicker, a more safer path. Sometimes the little ones are actually the ones that are tripping the bigger ones, believe it or not. So we're real excited. It will go around the blacktop area, it will be handicap accessible, and it will also offer an alternative for our students during recess.
Great. Congratulations. Is there anyone from Central High School Robotics? And these are not robots, right?
So the gift was given by Gus and Hannah Applequist for us to ensure to have off-season and on-season competitions in Salina. It's always been in Kansas City or Oklahoma City, so we're trying to get the growth of first robotics into the western part of Kansas.
Okay, that's great.
So that's what it's for.
Congratulations.
Thank you for being here.
Uh huh. See, did I miss anyone?
I think we're good.
I think we're good. Right now is public forum time, and this is a time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, they may do so. I do not see anyone, so next on our agenda is action agenda. We will talk about South High Band and Orchestra Out of State Field Trip with Alyssa Lane.
Good evening. I'm here to talk to you about our every four-year trip to Disney World. The dates that we're looking at are Friday, March 20th, 2020. The dates that we're looking at are Friday, March 20th, 2020, which is a Friday, and then we would be coming back on Monday, March 23rd, and all students would be back to school on the 24th, which is a Tuesday. Location is Orlando, Florida, at Disney World. The band would be performing in the Magic Kingdom. They do a parade where they march all the way through, and then orchestra will be performing at Disney Springs. We're estimating about 120 students between the band and orchestra program to go on this trip. We're working on travel arrangements. We're looking at a couple of different options with travel agencies. Some of the more national groups actually now have apps where you can track the students in the park and also online payment options, so we're kind of looking at that avenue as well. Sponsor-wise, there will be myself, Mr. Brooks, and our assistant band director. We will have an administrator from South High, two nurses or doctors, a police officer if possible, six parents of students. It'll be a total of 12 sponsors, which will be about one per every 10 kids. I also know one of the parent sponsors who's looking to go is also a counselor, so I feel like that will be really good for our trip as well. The students have been fundraising for the past, like, four to eight years, depending on how long they've been in the program. We do everything from sale, let's see, we've done butter braid sales. I know the band has done popcorn sales, I think was their last one, but we do that for the past eight to four years so the students can raise money for that.
Are there any questions or comments? Can I have a motion? Ann?
Madam President, I move that we approve the South High Band and Orchestra trip to Orlando, Florida on March 20th, 2020 to March 23rd, 2020, as presented.
Emma Doherty, second.
Any other comments at all? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations.
Have a good time.
Uh huh. Have a wonderful time, y'all. Next on our agenda is textbook adoption with Lynn X. Lane.
At the last meeting, I shared with you our recommendation for middle school math textbooks. The recommendation in front of you is for illustrative mathematics. The publisher is McGraw-Hill, and so it is our recommendation that you approve the textbooks from McGraw-Hill in the amount of $188,142.06, and then math kits that our teachers can use to actually do the classroom activities in the amount of $6,135 from Open Up Resources because they provide those in a prepackaged way that makes teachers' lives easier. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those. Otherwise, we're looking for approval so that we can get the materials ordered for our teachers.
Okay, any comments or questions? Can I have a motion? Gary?
I move that we approve the textbook adoption and purchase of textbooks and instructional resources for middle school math as presented.
Second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Any comments? Gary?
I looked at them today, and I was kind of amazed. And I mentioned to Ms. X. Lane that in the middle school, if you read carefully between the lines on these, they're preparing kids for calculus in 6th and 7th grade because they're giving you little bitty bits of concepts. I think that's really cool. The other thing I liked about it is it's not just math. It's like, the kids might not know it, but they're learning statistics and other things that used to be separate, but I think teaching it all together like that is really a good idea. I think that's been proven over and over again.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Next on our action agenda is commencement date for 2020 with Dr. Hardy.
Thank you, Madam President. Our Board of Education did approve a calendar for next year, and now we're filling in the dates. We're looking at May 17th next year of 2020 as graduation for Central and South High. It'll be in the same location. You know, we do alternate who goes first and who goes second, so next year, Central High would be at two and South High would be at five. And the bonus is, just like we had this year, it's not on Mother's Day.
Moms will be happy.
Moms will be happy, yes. So, with that in mind, ask the Board to approve that recommendation.
Jim?
Madam President, I move that we approve the 2020 commencement date of May 17, 2020, as presented.
Second? Ann?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. And next on our action agenda is Salina Adult Education Center graduation date for 2020.
Yes, ma'am. Another important part of our school families is the Salina Adult Education Center, and of course, that's an awesome graduation. I know last year, our Board attended it. It's a really great day for our students and really a testimony to their perseverance. And we're recommending May 28th, 2020 for the GED graduation date. I think the location is to be determined as to the size of the class.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, I move we approve the May 28th, 2020 GED graduation date as presented.
Second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Any comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next on our agenda is discussion agenda, capital improvement with Chris Eppson.
Good evening. It's that time of year we do the capital improvement plan. I'm going to go through our plan for the year. Before I do that, I'll review what we've done this year by way of capital improvements. So, this is an overview of the 26 projects that we completed this year. We spent about $1.2 million, and of that, you can see that HVAC is a set aside and roofing is a set aside. So, the next view kind of gives some highlights, and we'll take, as far as vehicles go, we did three new Suburbans this year for building security. We did, if you remember, we did cameras in both of our middle schools on the interiors, interior of the building. That's complete. We did a retrofit on South High's roof. We did, we're in the process of replacing HVAC units at Coronado. We did a condensing unit at Heartland. We did head-end room, which is where all the MIS things come to the school. We did HVAC units in Oakdale, Schilling, and Sunset, and we purchased a Skid steer. We did 19 classrooms worth of furniture this last summer, and we've got a couple left to do yet this summer. And we did three mowers and new outside bleachers at South Middle School. Are there any questions about the projects that we completed?
Chris, what kind of flooring did we do in those 19 classrooms?
We did carpet, carpet squares. Mostly some, we have left that up to custodial staff and building administrators. Some of the grade schools like to have a tile area because we have sinks, and so we've kind of worked through that. We did luxury vinyl tile, which doesn't need to be stripped and waxed like this floor does, and carpet is the lion's share of the flooring that we've done.
What kind of a life do you expect on those floorings?
Well, we're looking for 20 years, maybe stretch it a little bit. We do, every summer, we clean that stuff, and, you know, I, two years ago, I was thinking, wow, we've got 2 million square feet in the district. And at a rate of about $6 a square foot, what's going to happen? Where we're at right now is the, we've gone through the second bond issue now. The first one was in 1999, 2000, all, most of the flooring was new then, so it's already 20 years old. And so, the strategy is to deliberately chunk out money every year and just start replacing the worst case. So, you won't see a tremendous amount of detail in the out-years in the plan because the situation changes. We may have a program move, and we might have high-needs students that might be destroying things at a faster rate, and so, but that's the plan is to carve out a certain amount of money that we just put in plug into flooring so that we don't get in a situation where we're, everything's just in really bad shape and we can't afford to do much about it.
Thank you.
Our priorities are the same as they were last year. Number one priority is safety of students and staff. Number two priority is protection of district assets. Number three is the delivery of program, and number four is aesthetics. Oftentimes, the priorities kind of blend together, so we may have something that appears to be an aesthetic fix, but it actually ties into program delivery or protection of assets. This is an overview of the planned projects for fiscal year 20, and we'll get into the details on the eaches coming up. Roofing, we're doing a roof retrofit slash replacement at Cottonwood and Sunset, and this was based on the roofing inspection that we had three years ago from Roofing Solutions Incorporated. We've hired them again to come back, so we're going to move out with these projects this year. That company's going to come back and reassess our roofs this summer, and so we'll have a whole new set of priorities. I would expect that next year, I'll be talking to you about 700 little repairs that we need to make all over the place to kind of stretch the life of our roofs. Building improvements, we're going to do asbestos abatement in this building. With the vacation of Salina West, it presented us an opportunity to relocate this office so that we could do some really much-needed work here, which is really difficult to do because it's open year-round. And so, while we're doing that, we've got electrical repairs that really need to happen, technology upgrades that really need to happen, and some cosmetic upgrades that we'll do while the building is vacant. It's the prime time to do that.
Do you have a timeframe for that?
We're planning on moving October, so we'll start here in October, and I've projected a completion by March.
Okay. Where's the primary location of the asbestos?
It's mostly HVAC piping, the insulation that's packed around the piping, and it's mostly on this half of the building over here, the older part of the building. We do have a pre-construction inspection that asbestos inspector is going to do, where we will test everything to make sure that we are, while we're at it, we're getting everything that we can find. We've only done the entry-level inspection up to this point as required by federal government. We're going to do the more advanced inspection to make sure we get it all. Building security, we're continuing with installing full perimeter electronic entry control at Meadowlark, Oakdale, Schilling, and Sunset. So, this will provide access badges at all the perimeter doors that are used, with the idea being it's a, provides for a more secure facility, number one. Number two, it allows us to collect up building master keys, which tend to run off, and when they run off, we have to spend thousands of dollars to rekey buildings. So, we would be able to limit the risk of that, so it's kind of a two-for-one. Building grounds, a structural spray and stripe of the stadium track, repair, repairs to both South Middle and Lakewood's track to try to extend the life of those tracks, and a replacement of a storage shed at Stewart. Flooring, we're doing six rooms this year at Husner and Meadowlark. We're replacing carpet in the Schilling front office area, replacing select floor tile in Oakdale in the hallways, and replacing floor tile in one room at Cottonwood. Plumbing, we have a hot water heater that's in the process of being replaced at South Middle. We thought we were going to be able to get a few more years out of it, but we're not. Luckily, we had planned for that, so we're going to move out and do that. Concrete, walking track at Meadowlark, we've heard it made good sense to get this puppy on there because we were getting some funds from PTO, and I think we're trying to chase some grant money to be able to do this, so I think it'll be a nice partnership to be able to get that completed. And vehicles, looking at a new work van for MIS this next year. And equipment, one small tractor mower for Lakewood. So, some of this is a little, maybe a little confusing for those of you who've been around for more than a year, but some of these projects you approved last year for this year. So, they show up on there, and it's kind of a weird deal for me because I don't know if I should take that off because it's already been approved. So, I just decided to always include the current projects, and we can just talk about them all as we go, even though they've been approved. It's weird that I'm giving, I'm saying, hey, this one's already underway. This is the first reading. Subject to your questions, that's all I had.
Any questions?
I was just curious about the parking lot over at South High. Drove through there the other day, and there's a certain section of that that's in pretty bad shape, I would assume from all the work that's been done over there. Is that on the list somewhere?
It is on the list. It's not on the list for this coming fiscal year 20. We are in the process of getting a parking lot assessment district-wide. I ran the numbers on the parking lot at South High, and that's going to be a sizable bunch of work there, so we're projecting to put, plug that in in the out-years to view that.
Any other questions? I think that's it, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very thorough.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Thursday, May 16th, Salina West Senior Celebration at 1:00 p.m. Thursday, May 16th, Diploma Completion Program Graduation, Salina West at 4:00 p.m. Sunday, May 19th, Graduation, South High School at 2:00 p.m. Central High School at 5:00 p.m. Thursday, May 30th, Salina Area Educational, yeah, Adult Education Center Graduation Ceremony at Lakewood at 7:00 p.m.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes.
The, we wear our robes on the 19th. I know, do we wear our robes on the 30th?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
But I don't, but we don't do it at Diploma Completion Program at SAC. Not at DCP, but we go, we do robe up at SAC. Okay. I'll start with Gabe.
Lots of end-of-year stuff that I've been to over the past couple of weeks, retirement reception, some stuff at South High and Stewart Elementary School, and attended the Schilling Meeting, the last half of the Schilling Meeting last week at the City of Salina and Salina Airport Authority. That's all I've got.
Ann?
Yes. Just right at the time of the last board meeting, I read the fourth graders at Sunset. Imaging something, they said it was the same book that Dr. Hardy read, so it was very patriotic and full of quotes from famous people. I took Treats to Opportunity Now, and, which is a very small staff, but it was fun, a lot of individual contact. I attended the Schilling Water Pollution Update, and Central Honors Night, and the South Honors Night, the Principal's Breakfast at South High. I did try, I went to the Planning and Zoning Board to listen in on the new presentation on the new building that's to be built on Broadway, but it took so long to get to that part that I had to leave before our part was over, so I don't know the outcome, but I think they probably approved it. I attended the Smoky Hill Education Service Center Board Meeting and the Retirement Reception. That's all. Thank you.
Jim?
All right. So, I had the Retirement Reception, of course, lots of vocal concerts, band concerts, things like that going on. The Principal's Breakfast at South High, along with several folks, and then got to go over to CKCIE and spend some time there and with the MIS Department, delivering treats and talking to them and thanking them, and the same today at Heartland. delivering treats and talking to them and thanking them, and the same today at Heartland.
Oh, great. Good.
No report for me?
No? Carol?
Yes. Nedra and I had a unique opportunity on April 25th to attend the KNEA Retired Teachers Convention. And we were there as representatives of school boards, teachers who have become school board members. And we had an interesting panel discussion. We'll save the rest of that. Went to the retirement tea, of course. And the other thing that I thought deserved special attention was the meeting with NEA Salina on May 8th. The primary purpose of that meeting was to discuss special education challenges that teachers find in their classrooms from time to time too often in terms of what many teachers believe. At any rate, Mike Lowers was there along with Brandy Callahan. And Dr. Hardy, Lynn Exline, and Shanna Rector also met with the NEA Salina officers. And the purpose of that was to discuss what's available to help teachers with special education students. And I think it's important for us to be aware that CKCIE does offer a number of things to help. Teachers are not always as aware of those as they might be. For example, training resources, MANT training, trauma informed programming, collaborative problem solving, among others, staff resources, such as help from CKF and other behavior consultants. Initiatives such as the new kindergarten preparation program offered through Heartland. Now admittedly, it's reaching only about eight students at the present time, but it is a beginning. And it was important, I think, that Lynn and Shanna also discussed means of communicating with staff about the resources that are available and assisting staff to move from information to application because they think that there's a breakdown at that particular spot. And I know our administration is really eager to assist in any way they can to help teachers feel more comfortable. At the very end of the meeting, Dr. Hardy did manage to squeeze in a brief review of the district budget challenges over the next three years, which is not necessarily good news, but something that needed to be discussed. So it was a productive meeting, as always.
Thank you, Carol. Emma?
Attended the District Council, Health Council for the District, and the retirement reception at Lakewood, and the principal's breakfast at South High, and then the support staff handbook review for the support staff for the district.
Thank you. This is a busy time of the year, and I've also been busy. As Carol said, we did go to the KNEA Retired Teachers, representing teachers that are now on school boards. And there were four of us there for that. There are two highlights that I will probably remember. One is that we were at Bethel College in an old, 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 old building. That the auditorium was part basketball floor, and the seats in the auditorium were the old wood seats that split, you know? And the bathrooms were down several flights of stairs and around corners and all of that. Was reminiscent of when I was a little girl in a building like that. I loved it, but the great, the great big plus side was that Governor Kelly showed up for a brief, brief moment in time, 10 minutes. I would say we'll get a couple of pictures of her. But she had very, very positive things to say and looked great in her blue suit. Kansas Department of Health and Environment met at the city building as those people that were there to discuss progress with the Schilling and Salina people there as also. Attended the retirement tea, got to pass out awards for that, delivered cookies to Salina West and stayed for a meeting with Curtis Exline, and that was really good. I'll tell you what, secondary staff meetings are a whole lot different than elementary. Very interesting. Went to Honors Night at South High School, saw a lot of former students walk across the stage. Went to Salina Education Foundation Executive Meeting and attended the principal's breakfast, which was current teachers, but it was also retired teachers. And I loved that because a lot of them were there when my children were still in high school, but they're becoming few and far between. So busy times, busy times ahead yet. Dr. Hardy, you have superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Of course, as Gabe started out, there's a lot of culminating events this time of year. And it is, they do serve as affirmations, you know, of all the amazing things going on in our district. So like I went, one of my favorite that I just had to point out is I went to the FFA Awards banquet. And theirs is, they do such a great job with parliamentary procedure and how they do business. It's extremely organized. Every little minute is planned a certain way. So it's kind of fun to see them with their leadership skills. A really nice orchestra concert last night at South High. They just did some really neat things with music. They actually did a medley of Queen hits with the orchestra, which was impressive. So I just want to point that out. I always think about that this time of year. So the two favorite days of the year, if you ask, is the first day of school and the last day of school. So the last day of school for students, of course, is Thursday, the 23rd. Last day for teachers is Friday, the 24th. The last thing I do want to point out is that there was, the briefs were presented for the Supreme Court for the school finance lawsuit. It was very interesting. One thing I got out of it, and I heard it from some folks that were there, there seemed to be a discussion about how close is close enough to meet the Supreme Court's expectations for school funding. I thought that was a very interesting discussion. These are the folks that are holding us as a school district to a pretty high standard, but for them, it's how close is close enough? So I'm glad we don't operate in that way in the school business. But the expectation is that there might be something, Lisa, did you hear the early June or middle June? Mid-June? Or some type of a, for the Supreme Court to make their decision, I guess I would say. So that's where that stands right now. Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move on to executive session, and we do need 30 minutes for negotiations with...
Madam President, I think we'll have plenty of time during that 30 minutes.
Yeah, I do, too. I agree. 30 minutes for executive session, and we could start at 5:00 after. That would give us time to get up and get out there. Anne?
I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 6:05 for 30 minutes for the purpose of discussing employer, employee negotiations. Because of this matter, were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize the resolution of the negotiation issues, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:35 in the board conference room.
Second? Carol seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. We will be in executive session at 5:00 after 6:00, and you are welcome to stay if you would like.